Good evening. At this time, I would like to call the August 1st, 2023 Stanley County Board of Education Meeting to order. Welcome to those of you that are here in attendance and to those that may be joining us via live streaming. We appreciate you being here and your support of Stanley County Schools. I believe that Dr. Lefler may be joining us by phone tonight or Zoom. Not quite sure. At this time, I would like to call on Mr. Bill Sorenson for our invocation and pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we are grateful for this opportunity to gather and work on behalf of the children of Stanley County. We thank you for each and every one of them and ask that you place a heavenly shield around all of our schools as the new year begins. Guide us and provide us with discernment and wisdom as we deliberate the matters before us and bless our employees as they embark on another educational journey, always placing our students first. With humble hearts, we pray in Jesus' name.
Thank you, Mr. Up on our agenda is some outstanding recognitions at this time. I will turn this over to you, Dr. Dennis.
Thank you. We have some Beginning Teacher of the Year recognitions. I'd like to call forward Ms. Deborah Rolls to facilitate this for us, please.
Good evening, Madam Chairperson, members of the board and guests. Thank you for the opportunity to present this evening. Tonight, we celebrate nominees for Stanley County Schools Beginning Teacher of the Year. With support of administrators, mentors, and participation in the Beginning Teacher Support Program, each of these individuals have demonstrated excellence in teaching and represent the promise of continued success for their students and their schools. We are honored to recognize them this evening and to share a few words that showcase why they are outstanding beginning teachers. First, we have Ms. Kimri Lauder from Apple Marlowe High School.
Come on up.
Ms. Lauder has completed her first year as an English teacher at Apple Marlowe High School. During the second semester, she took on the theater course and wrote and directed a short play for the theater students at Apple Marlowe High School and Stanley STEM Early College so that they could have a spring show. She has created a strong rapport with most students and seeks guidance, often regarding classroom management, instruction, and understanding her students.
Congratulations.
Next, we have Meredith Blaylock from Central Elementary. Ms. Blaylock was nominated by her peers as Beginning Teacher of the Year for her dedication to teaching and love for her students. She supports each student individually and helps them develop a love for learning. Next, from East Apple Marlowe Elementary, we have Austin Hurlacher. Mr. Hurlacher is a strong educator who creates engaging learning experiences which excite students for learning. He builds excellent relationships with their families and is well-connected to the community. Mr. Hurlacher often recruits other members to visit the classroom and to showcase their career paths. We had two that are not in attendance tonight, and that was Samantha Hogan from Baden Elementary and Brandon Morton from West Stanley High. These beginning teachers lead by example and are an inspiration to everyone around them. We are grateful for a new generation of teachers to lead their classrooms and love their students. Each of these teachers do this daily in their classrooms and are deserving of the award. The 2022-2023 Stanley County Schools Beginning Teacher of the Year is Austin Hurlacher. Congratulations.[336.22][336.22](applause)
Dr. Dennis? Can I get one more, please?[342.81][342.81](laughter) Perfect. Thank you.
Do you want them to shake their hands? If y'all want to come around and shake.
Yes, we do. We'd like to come around and shake your hands.
Thank you.
And congratulate.[360.13][360.13](applause)
Next, I would like to call up Coach Emily Smith. So Coach Smith, here we go, was recognized by the North Carolina Softball Coaches Association as the 2A Softball Coach of the Year during the North Carolina Coaches Clinic in July after the record-setting 31-win championship season for West Stanley High School and, of course, the subsequent 2A championship.
Coach Smith, you're not getting away.[436.13][436.13](laughter) Do you mind walking around? We might not come back down and showcase it.[452.13][452.13](laughter)
That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Wow, I think we were in the presence of greatness all the way around, board members, right? Absolutely. And also, congratulations to our teachers and congratulations, Coach. I have to say, Coach, it might be irreverent from now on just to say Emily, so I'm going to say Coach. And it's awesome. Thank you all for all that you do, and I hope you have a great school year and start to the school year. I'll see our principals here. I know you're proud, and I will say thank you. Next on the agenda is closed session. At this time, I would like to ask for a motion to enter into closed session for Personnel Matters, North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A6; Student Matters, North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A1; Attorney/Client Matters, North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A3. May I have a motion, please?
I make a motion and go into closed session.
A motion by Ms. Poplin, a second. Second by Ms. Watson. All in favor, say aye. Post no. The board is now in closed session. We appreciate you being here and your support of Stanley County Schools. Next on the agenda is public comments. In accordance with Policy 2310, public participation at board meetings each month, part of at least one regularly scheduled meeting, will be set aside for citizens to address the board through public comment. Each speaker will receive three minutes to present comments. However, the public comment session will not exceed 15 minutes total, except by majority vote of the board. We have board docs working, Ms. Miller. Okay, so there'll be a timer, and we can let you know when the three minutes is up. We have one speaker for tonight, Ms. Davida Brown. Hey, Ms. Brown, thank you for being here.
Hello. Do you want to speak? Okay. Good evening. As she said, I am Davida Brown. I came to the school board meeting to invite you guys to our 2023 Youth Conference at Mount Zion Baptist Church, Apple Mar. On that Saturday, we will be doing a unity prayer, and I would love to see you guys there as a community to support the kids, to pray before our school year gets started. Teachers, coaches, school board members, everyone. The Youth Department of Mount Zion will host a unity prayer and breakfast on August 12th at 2023 at 10:00 a.m. The event will be held on the church grounds at 401 Wall Street in Apple Mar. You are cordially invited to attend this event. Immediately after the prayer, we will host a youth conference with our guest speaker, Minister Elijah Menloch from Resurrection Life Community Church. Please consider joining us for this unity prayer and remain for the conference if possible. It is free of charge.
Hi.
I have a flyer and information sheet that I'll leave at the back, and thank you for letting me speak on behalf of our church.
Thank you. Your flyer, Ms. Brown, is that something you have with you that you can pass over to Dr.
Yes, ma'am. I have a flyer and information sheet as well.
Okay, and...
She can take a copy of it so that we can distribute it to the whole board.
Yeah, and it can all come to us.
Yes, ma'am.
So this is on August the 12th?
Yes, ma'am, and we'll finish on that Sunday, August 13th, at the church service, and then we'll have a pool party and cookout at Chuck Moore Head.
So we're invited to the pool party?
All of it.
And the cookout?
Everything.
That sounds awesome.[715.44][715.44](laughter)
And I am the youth director there. I was a little nervous at first, so I want to go back and retrack that. I am Davida with everything and a youth director there.
Well, thank you for all you do, and we appreciate that invitation.
Thank you so much.
Yes. With the approval of the minutes of the June 6, 2023 regular meeting, the June 15 special called meeting, the June 26 special called meeting, June 29 work session, June 29 special called meeting, and July 13 work session, all of you have had a chance to look over these minutes. If there's no corrections, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
A motion by Ms. Whitaker, a second.
Second.
Okay, second by Ms. Watson and Ms. Poplin, I believe. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Post no. The consent agenda has been approved. Thank you. Next, we have committee reports. Facilities is first. Ms. Poplin?
Thank you. Facilities met, and we just sort of discussed our upcoming addition at Indy and where we're going with that and just future plans along those lines. But other than that, I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Thank you. Finance, Mr. Leisk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our finance committee met on July 26 at 4:00 p.m. as a follow-up to the work session, I think, back in June when ESS, which is the company that helps us with teacher assistants and substitutes to fill those positions, presented there some numbers as far as the renewal of the contract. So that contract is up as of the end of the fiscal year. I think the original contract was entered back in 2019, if I recall, a different board, different superintendent. But we had some questions on the numbers, didn't quite add up, and I wanted to call a committee meeting, work with Mr. Duddy to understand how our taxpayer dollars were being spent and if those are being best utilized under the contract. So we went back and forth a little bit. There's roughly 60 or 62, I think, teacher assistant positions that ESS has helped us fill, and we've basically narrowed down. I think, Mr. Duddy, some of that is published on the board docs, the numbers that we have come down to. But the committee wanted to look at that. We think it's something that the full board needs to discuss in the work session to ensure that we understand exactly what those costs are, if we were or were not to renew the contract and where it's a benefit to the school system and to the taxpayer. And the ultimate goal is to use our funds wisely. So we did discuss that. We will push this to a work session maybe in the next month or two, and then we can certainly make a decision from there. But that's the extent of it. Right now, we're looking at roughly $1 million that have been spent in substitutes, about $300,000 roughly of that as a markup to ESS. Teacher assistants, a little bit different. You know, essentially, the company doesn't have to pay the pension benefit or the insurance benefit, but the reality is a Stanley County Schools employee, based on my numbers that I'm looking at, ends up making more at the end of the year. So I'm a little perplexed as to how you can pay an employee set less and somehow have higher demand for the position. Whereas, working for Stanley County Schools, you get higher benefits, and you know, when you factor in the money given to you, it ends up equating to a much larger hourly pay. So it's something our board will have to take a look at to see if there is a savings and if, you know, if there is, how we want to move forward. The other thing I'd say the committee and the board are going to look at is with teacher assistants, there is, you know, if you work for Stanley County Schools, part of your job is to drive a bus. And so we can parlay this in. Well, we have 60 or 62 positions our board needs to evaluate. If we were to assume that back from ESS, how will that impact or help our bus driver situation? Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and I appreciate the work that's been done on that. And I know in talking with Dr. Dennis today and I know probably discussion with Ms. Miller, we will be getting some dates together soon for a work session, maybe some dates sent out, and then we'll just have to see where the majority falls with that. But I would like to, I want to pursue this more, don't want to put it off. So as I'm thinking, we need to look at maybe the end of September, possibly even before our next board meeting, if that's, you know, if that's, we can do that. I'm thinking, oh, well, end of August, is that going to be tough with school starting back and everything? Just plan something.
It could be. My recommendation would be sometime in September.
September.
Unless, but you know, because we do have some time before the end of the school year. But if you want to expedite, we can, but I think, you know, we'll give them more flexibility with everyone.
Right.
Because I know, you know, we all have jobs as well.
I was trying not to put it off all the way into October, so, yeah.
I'll get you something, or we'll try to get something in September, not too far from the board meeting.
Okay.
If that sounds good.
That sounds good, and thank you for the work that's been done with that, Mr. Leisk and your committee. Instructional program, Mr. Sorenson?
No report, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Marketing and community engagement with Ms. Watson?
No report.
Thank you. Policy, Ms. Whitaker?
Yes, Madam Chair. We are bringing some policies before you for final approval. You'll see those listed there. The public will also be able to see those on board docs. These have been out for 30 days, so we are asking for final approval for these policies.
Okay, and all of you see that, you see them listed. So can I have a motion to approve the committee recommendation of policies for final approval?
Make a motion. Will you approve the policies that are up for final approval tonight?
Okay. Motion by Ms. Poplin, a second. Second by Mr. Sorenson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Post no. Okay, these policies have been approved, and then I think you have something else.
You will see a list in front of you of policies that are to be rescinded. Basically, we are in the process of redoing our policy manual, and the policies that we are rescinding tonight are just, have just been replaced by the policies that you just approved. So basically, it's changing the policy number on those.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve the rescinded policies as presented?
I make a motion. Will you approve the rescinded policies as presented?
Okay, a motion by Ms. Poplin, a second. Second by Mr. Leisk. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Post no. Okay, these policies have been rescinded. Is that it?
That's all.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Whitaker. Safety and security is Dr. Lefler. I don't know if, I don't believe there's been a meeting, Dr. Lefler.
No, we have not had a meeting, but we are supposed to have SROs in every school this year, so that'll be a big improvement. I don't think there's been any changes to that.
Should have a SRO in every school, which will be great.
Thank you, and I know that Ms. Flo's sitting back there. I know a lot of work's been put into that, and Dr. Lefler, I appreciate what you've done, and I assume you're going to speak a little bit about this during your comments or now?
Yeah, I'm going to make a short, little comment about it, yes.
Okay. When it's your superintendent.
That's right.
Okay. All right, thank you, Dr. Next on the agenda is the Stanley County Schools Beginning Teacher Support Plan. I will turn this over to, okay, Ms. Rolls?[1330.63][1330.63](laughter) I'm looking, going, who do I turn this over to?
Good evening again, Madam Chairperson and members of the board. At this time, I will offer an overview of Stanley County Schools Beginning Teacher Support Program. Stanley County Schools, in compliance with North Carolina Board of Education, State Board of Education Policy TCED-016, has developed a Beginning Teacher Support Program for all beginning teachers in years 1 through 3 of service. Beginning Teacher Support Program that I am referencing has been submitted for your review and follows the planned template as outlined by the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. Components that align with state board requirements include, but are not limited to, Beginning Teacher Orientation, Mentor Selection Guidelines, Process for Achieving a Continuing License, a Plan for Beginning Teacher Professional Development, and Participation in the Beginning Teacher Support Program Monitoring Process through North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. Stanley County Schools provides beginning teachers multi-tier support, beginning at the district level with a Beginning Teacher Support Coordinator and at the school level with administration and an individual mentor. A lead mentor at each school has been included in the 2023-2024 Plan as an additional measure of support. Also included in the 2023-2024 Beginning Teacher Support Program is the increased opportunity for beginning teachers to observe expert teachers in order to improve knowledge of effective instruction, classroom management, and/or other designated skills. The Beginning Teachers of the Year that were recognized earlier this evening are exemplary models of the impact a strong Beginning Teacher Support Program can have on the success of Stanley County Schools. With your approval, Stanley County Schools will move forward with the implementation of the 2023-2024 Beginning Teacher Support Program as submitted. Thank you.
I'm going to ask for a motion first, and then we may have some questions for you. So thank you for that presentation and what you've given us here. May I have a motion to approve the Stanley County Schools Beginning Teacher Support Plan as presented?
Motion to approve the plan as presented.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Leisk, a second. A second by Ms. Watson. Now, board members, are there any discussion or questions you have?
I just have a question about the PDP Plan, I guess is what you guys are calling it on here, under where they're going to get their continuing license or I guess their licensure, their dual entry. Is that part of this or no?
Ms. Tamara Rollins, our licensure expert, assists them to make sure they have all their documentation in and guides them throughout those three years to obtain that licensure through the residency licensure program.
Okay, and it talks about a timeline. Can you tell me, and you may or may not notice, tell me when and how often they're informed of what it is that they need to have?
When the benchmark dates come up from DPI, they have deadlines for submitting residency licensure forms, they have deadlines for completing applications, for opening licensure applications, and Ms. Rollins sends out those emails, and she follows up with each of those, and they monitor what has been submitted, who has outstanding deficiencies. So she, as our licensure expert, monitors that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I saw on here, Ms. Rolls, that you can also use our retired teachers as mentors. I love that.
Yes, we're excited about that.
Now, that's been sent out. Are we getting some retired teachers and interest from them to do this?
I believe so. It was shared with principals at the administrative retreat, and so I think we're going to see more increased activity and engagement, participation on that level. I know we have some that have done it for years informally, but it would be nice to recognize them in a formal manner if they choose to participate.
Right, absolutely.
Yeah.
I mean, those veteran teachers like that, that have retired.
And most of them will take them under their wing, and they do it anyway, so it'd be nice to recognize them.
Yes, yes. And I believe that we have a stipend?
That is correct.
I think the mentoring program is extremely important.
Yes, ma'am.
For our young teachers.
Yes.
You know, our beginning teachers.
It is.
They may not always be young.
That's right.
They're beginning teachers. And also, I appreciate this. Is this something that you, like, update every year for us?
Yes.
Okay.
And this is following the template that had been in place, and we just added the changes of the lead mentor, and we now have, using some Title II funding for observations that they can go out and have substitutes cover their class while they go and observe expert teachers.
Yes, that's so important.
And one more thing. Who chooses the mentors? Is that done at the school level or is that done at...
The principal does that, and there are guidelines of criteria that the mentors have to meet to be eligible to be mentors, and that's given by DPI as well.
Right. Any other questions, board members or comments? Yes.
I'm reading this right, seven observations per year for our beginning teachers for three years. Is that correct?
Seven.
Three informal and four times formally observed. Is that correct?
The formal is just part of the NICE's plan that they're assigned the comprehensive, and the informal can just be by their mentor, just to go in and give feedback.
Those are announced or not, or somewhere?
Yes, they'll work with their BT. They'll ask, you know, most of the time the BTs will ask, hey, I'm having trouble with this, can you come in and give me some feedback? Or they just work that out.
About the formal as well?
The formal will be, yes, by their administrator, yes, with a pre-conference and a post-conference. -for our young teachers.
Yes.
You know, our beginning teachers. They may not always be young, but they're beginning teachers. And also, um, I appreciate this. Is this something that you, like, update every year for us?
Yes.
Okay.
And this is following the template that had been in place, and we just added the changes of the lead mentor, and we now have, using some Title II funding for observations that they can go out and have substitutes cover their class while they go and observe expert teachers.
Yes, that's so important.
And one more thing, who chooses the mentors? Is that done at the school level, or is that done at-
The principal does that, and there are guidelines of criteria that the mentors have to meet to be eligible to be mentors, and that's given by D P I as well.
Right. Any other questions, board members, or comments? Yes.
I'm reading this right, seven observations per year for our beginning teachers for three years, is that correct?
Seven.
There's three informal and four, four times formally observed, is that correct?
The formal is just part of the N E S A's, uh, plan that they're assigned the comprehensive, and the informal can just be by their, um, mentor, just to go in and give feedback. It's-
Those are announced or not, or somewhere?
Yes, they'll work with their B T. They'll ask, you know, it, most of the time, the B Ts will ask, "Hey, I'm having trouble with this, can you come in and give me some feedback?" Or they just work that out.
About the formal as well?
The formal will be, yes, by their administrator, yes, with a pre-conference and a post-conference.
Thank you. We want to support our beginning teachers all that we can. I know every board member up here wants to do that. If there's anything that we can do as board members throughout, you know, please let us know, because, I mean, if it's just, you know, sharing a, a word of thank you, or whatever it is, we want to support, we want to support, we do support all of our teachers, but we really want to support those beginning teachers.
And we appreciate your support. Thank you, board, for your support.
Okay, um, so I have had a motion, I've had a second, we've had discussions. So all in favor of approving the Stanley County Schools Beginning Teacher Support Plan as presented, uh, say aye. Oppose no. Okay, this plan has been approved. Thank you, Ms. Rolls. Next, we have, um, curriculum and instruction. It's the consolidated federal plans. Mr. Plummer.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. I come with you tonight to get approval for our consolidated federal programs plan, so we can move forward to request funding for Titles One, Two, Three, and Four. Ms. Nancy Hatley has worked, um, a lot over the past couple months with our principals, our parent stakeholder groups, teacher stakeholder groups, to receive feedback on the plan and be able to develop a plan going from the twenty-two, twenty-three school year into the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So what you have in front of you is what we have developed based on the feedback that we have received. Just to kind of touch a few of the highlights there, um, at the top are our three goals that we have, um, meeting or exceeding expected growth in reading, meeting or exceeding expected growth in math, and to retain at least eighty percent of our beginning teachers here in Stanley County. Within Title One, improving basic programs, our plan is to provide opportunities to employ or contract additional staff to support student learning at our schools, support parent and family engagement. Title Two, supporting effective instruction. Um, that's with what Ms. Rolls was talking about with our Beginning Teacher Program, providing professional development opportunities for teachers, stipends for our mentors of beginning teachers, and reimbursing teachers who obtain additional certification on their licensure throughout the school year. Title Three focuses on our English language acquisition program and provides additional, uh, materials and resources for our English as a Second Language Program and ma- making sure that those students have resources in front of them to support them throughout the school year. Title Four, student support and academic achievement revolves around three different areas of funding, supporting well-rounded education opportunities, which we devote that funding toward our Dual Immersion Program at Indy Elementary, supporting safe and healthy students, that we partner with the Y M C A for our second grade Learn to Swim Program, and supporting the effective use of technology, which we provide opportunities for professional development for student engagement and digital literacy with technology integration. So, um, those are the highlights of what the plan is. Um, the additional information is there for you, but we just need approval tonight, though, to move forward in seeking that funding should our plan be approved by D P I.
Thank you. So you have heard the presentation from Mr. Plummer. You've had a chance to read through this. Um, may I have a motion to approve the consolidated federal programs, Title One, Title Two, Title Three, and Title Four plans as presented?
Madam Chair, I can wait till discussion.
Yes. So can I have a motion first to approve? By Ms. Watson, a second. Okay, a second by Ms. Poplin and Mr. Sorensen. Now, discussion.
Uh, Mr. Plummer, uh, of the, a couple of questions. Really, one is just probably clarifying something, but I'll get to that. But the Title II funding, um, what part of that in there, or do we have anything designated for, like, professional development in the STEM school? Uh, I think Mrs. Crawford's worked really hard and spoke with you and, and Mrs. Rolls on that. And I'm just curious, I didn't see that in there, and I was curious as to, is there funding available through Title II for that?
Yes, we, we certainly have funding that, that is available through Title II that we can pull those things out. We typically try not to nail down anything completely, because then we fall within the constraints of what was approved and what was not approved. Um, Ms. Hatley works diligently to keep it broad enough that P D falls within those categories for our teachers, so they have those opportunities. Everything's going to fall back, um, with the third bullet, additional P D for teachers and administrators, that we have opportunities like that.
Okay, good, and, and one more que- the reason I ask is my kids attended the STEM camp and really liked it, and I think there was a good response to it, so I'm, like, all STEM now, but-
And, and Ms. Crawford has worked on and continues to work on a plan to be able to not just use those STEM P D opportunities within Oakboro, but to also include other teachers as well throughout the district.
And so, um, adding on to that, I think, um, if I'm looking at my notes correctly, we may have had robotics before, and that, is that something? Because I know I have N E S A's in other states that have taken that through their school and, and at the elementary level. And I'm just curious, is that something we could bring here? I think we had it before.
We have had it before. Covid kind of became the demise of robotics and put a lot of things on hold. Um, part of that is just having, uh, the interest for people that want to stay after school and be able to participate, but we still have those materials and are able to continue with those programs as well.
So they used to have that at Central when my kids were there, that they had robotics puller team, or whatever that was?
Now, Mr. Plummer, they did have the underwater robotics team this year, correct?
The Oakboro STEM-
Oakboro STEM.
-had the robotics, um, but we did have the robotics at all of our elementary schools that competed against each other.
Mr. Plummer, can you tell me a little bit about, um, the RISE program?
Sure. Um, actually, RISE came about as a brainchild of Ms. Wood when she was with us and myself. We were just in conversation. I was honestly being a little selfish and trying to think of ways to offer some P D for curriculum coaches. We have several of our, um, outstanding curriculum coaches are within not too far of being able to retire and just thinking of growing our own and being able to offer those opportunities to get some people's feet wet and be ready for when those opportunities are here. But in talking with Ms. Wood, we decided to expand it a little bit and not make it just about curriculum coaches, but teachers who may be interested in being a mentor and giving them that insight into what leadership is about. Teachers who may be interested in being a grade-level chairperson or a department chairperson, giving them, um, some different experiences they may not have every day at school. People who are interested in coaching, people who may be interested in administration down the road. Just to kind of lead them through some leadership activities that would give them something to add to their toolbox and to their resume to show that they've put some effort forth toward, um, expanding their leadership capabilities. Uh, we did send out an interest survey in the spring, and we had twenty-two teachers who showed an interest in that. So that was, we felt like that was something we could add to our toolbox to be able to offer for our teachers to grow our own and find ways within the district that they can, um, progress.
And the last point I had, uh, is more clarifying, so please correct me if, if I'm wrong. Uh, we informally had discussed this, um, in, outside of our committee time, but the Title One funding, um, it seems like there's maybe some misconceptions in the community. And again, correct me if I'm wrong, but the way that I understand that funding, you, we, we get it, we have, based on our poverty levels, um, per A D M, uh, and the board has the ability to choose how to distribute that out um, to each school and, and what manner we deem best fit. And the way that, um, prior boards and our board has chosen to do that um, is making sure that every child across the county, um, can receive the same funding. So for example, um, maybe an Albemarle City School has a higher poverty level, um, but there's also a poor kid in Stanfield. And if we were to give more dollars, um, per kid to, in this example, the Albemarle City School, then we give less dollars to the poor kid in Stanfield, under that example. Um, so the board has chosen not to distribute the funds that way, and we want to sure, ensure that it's fair uh, and equal, uh, as the best way possible across the board.
So the way our formula operates, Ms. Hatley and I sat down yesterday and crunched the numbers and going back through, we have a per pupil allotment, and it doesn't matter where you are in the district, per pupil, that same amount is given. It's not based off of A D M, but it is based off of those, um, poverty numbers that we have. And it, it's, it's coming from that, but it doesn't matter where you are, it's still that per pupil allotment, um, that schools are getting.
So it's, it's, the misconception is that we're arbitrarily, or I guess I should say the board or the district is arbitrarily choosing to fund one school at a higher level than another, and that would be incorrect.
That is correct. You are correct.
Thank you, sir.
No problem.
And just for further clarification, the only reason one school would get more money than another is because their student number is higher than another.
The, the number of stu- and, and that, that was, that's been a, a conversation Ms. Hatley has had with principals, just to help them see and understand. I think she's done a great job the past year helping them see those formulas that everything works into and understanding what those numbers mean. Um, but the per pupil allotment stays the same no matter what. It has to do with, with the number of students that qualify within Title One.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments, board members? Okay, we've had a motion made and a second. We've had discussion. All in favor of approving the consolidated federal programs for Title One, Title Two, Title Three, and Title Four as presented, say aye. Any opposed, no? Okay, these consolidated federal programs has been approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank Ms. Hatley. I see her sitting back there, so we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have auxiliary services. I'll turn this over to you, Mr. Dudney.
Thank you, um, Ms. Gibson. Um, in your packet, you'll see that the, um, the school fees that we have for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, uh, we have, um, roughly, we have four that are district-wide, that all students, that would be responsible, um, for that fee, um, except for, well, let's say three, and then driver's education once they're eligible to take driver's education. Uh, and then we've also listed the other fees that our individual schools have on their part. So, um, we would need this approved by the board if you choose to, uh, accept these school fees for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Yeah, this has to be approved by policy before the school gives, before they charge the fees.
Board members, you've all had a chance to look over this. Um, may I have a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four student school fees as presented?
I'll move to approve the school fees as presented.
A motion by Mr. Lisk, a second. Second by Ms. Watson, any discussion?
I do have a question. The fees that are countywide, I assume, are the ones at the top. When those are collected from the schools, do those fees automatically come to the, to the county office? They come here?
They, they come to the county office.
None of that is kept at the school?
No, ma'am, no, ma'am. Uh, and, and I've sort of been sort of lenient. I do not require them to, every time they take in a five-dollar fee, to send a check for five dollars. Uh, we, uh, Sarah and I have worked with them in the, uh, over the last three years to, if, um, you know, do it cordially, depending on what balances you have in those accounts. But definitely by June thirtieth, the count is zeroed out at the schools and submitted to the central office for those fees.
Do we track that?
Uh, yes, we do. Yes, we do. Yes, we do.
And it follows them, I assume?
Yes, it does. If, um, if the child, if the student is not, if the fee is not paid by the student, um, then it follows that student right on up through grade twelve.
And then?
And then, if it's not paid then, then there, we have, uh, uh, of course, um, there has been some, some left unowed, um, by the, by the student, by the parent. And I know that we have some situations in the schools that they, uh, when fees are not collected, then there's, you know, we have alternatives to where maybe they do it and, um, do certain activities in the school and stuff of that sort.
And all of those funds, I guess, are used for replacement or repair of the-
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, most, all of the technology fees counter off for what we have to pay out of our local budget for technology, uh, services or, or technology items that we had, that is purchased. Uh, the driver's education is maintained by our contracted agent. So every invoice that we get, uh, references the sixty-five-dollar credit that they receive on our behalf. So that's not money that we actually have to take in at the schools. The actual contracted agent handles that for us.
And that fee's set in general statute?
Sir?
That fee is set in general statute, yes, sir.
Parking pass money for each of the high schools, do those funds stay at the school level?
They stay at the schools, yes, ma'am.
I have a comment, if, you know, I always hate if, I mean, some of these fees are like five dollars or ten dollars, but if a child, the family's not able to pay that, do, does the school, our principals or others reach out, like, through even their P T A? Or we have local churches that I believe would, if they only knew how they could help, I think they would help. Um, so that by the time a child gets to the end of the year and we say that child can't participate in something because they owe fees, I would like to just see if we can't do something about that all along. That's just how I, you know, how I feel. And I guess that's something more that would be sent out to our principals or whatever, and, you know, reach out. Um, we have so many, um, and just like Ms., I don't know, is Ms. Brown still here?
No, ma'am.
Is she there, ma'am?
Okay, but I mean, you know, we, we see that churches inviting us and stuff, and I just would like, once we see at the beginning of the year that students still owe their technology fee, whatever that amount might be, or a P E uniform, whatever, um, I would like to see if there's some, someone who can help reach out to others to get this paid.
And, and just to make a comment, we have had, we have had that to happen in the past. Uh, since I've been here, we've had, uh, uh, community involvement to help pay for lunch fees. That's been outstanding at year-end, as well as we've had some donations to our schools, um, that has been, if you have a child that is in desperate need, to, to, at the discretion of the, of the principal, to use that funds for that. Uh, it's been very, very few, um, even in this past, this past June thirtieth, we had very few community involvement even helped with the cafeteria charges. But, uh, that, we have had that. So I mean, yes, anything we could do as an outreach to the community or anything of that sort to help with student fees or student lunches fees and stuff like that would be greatly appreciated.
Yeah, I, I just believe there's people out there and churches out there and others, if they only knew that they would help. Uh, I believe they would. Um, we've had a motion, or no. Yeah, we had a motion, we've had a second. We've had discussion. All in favor say aye. Oppose no. Okay, the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four student school fees has been approved. Thank you, Mr. Dudney. Next on the agenda, Superintendent comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, first, I want to recognize our, um, Director of Safety, Ms. Jennifer Flo. She spoke at the RISE twenty-twenty-three Summit in Gastoni yesterday. I believe the topic, uh, revolved around, uh, communities and law enforcement and, you know, how they work together and building those relationships. Uh, athletic practice has began, so, uh, we're getting geared up for that. Uh, teachers start back this week. Uh, I was able to, excuse me, go over to, um, North Albemarle today, and they had the beginning teachers there, and they looked like they were having a big time. So I watched them for a while and just kind of snuck out. I didn't want to slow them down, but, uh, it was a good-looking group, uh, there today. Uh, of course, um, we are, uh, well, I, I've told you this, but, um, just to say it, uh, we are applying for another round of recruitment retention bonuses, and this will be for all staff. Uh, there will be some similar guidelines to last year, and I hope to give you an update, uh, very shortly on that. I went to, uh, our Student Information Services yesterday, or today, for that matter, to inquire about our enrollment without getting the specific numbers, but it was pretty, um, concrete numbers that was given. Right now, we're sending a higher student number than we were- was given, right now, we're setting a higher student number than we were at our best last year, and as we all know, is, is the school year, or I should say, the school year, as these next weeks progress and school starts, we will gain more students, so we are looking right now at a student increase, barring anything cataclysmic. There was an SRO meeting today that Ms. Flo had, getting all the SROs that were trained in and getting them together, and then the other, the newer SROs, you know, like had been mentioned earlier, we now have SROs in all of our schools, which is outstanding, especially for a rural area like Stanley County. Yeah, thank you. I want to thank the local municipalities, the commissioners, everyone that helps make that happen, and, but the other group, the, the newer group, they were at SRO training, I think they were at their conference, so they're getting trained up and they'll be ready to go as we begin the new school year. I think right now, that is all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and we appreciate all you do, Dr. Dennis. Mr. Sorenson, I'm going to call on you first. Well, no, I won't regret it.
Okay, I have prepared comments, because this is the beginning of a school year, everybody is so busy, we need to celebrate a little bit, so we also need to welcome back our students and staff, and it is my sincere hope that this is the best school year ever for our students and our staff, and I do hope our students recognize and take advantage of all the wonderful opportunities available to them, especially for our middle school and high school kids, it's, it's important to do the things you can do while you can do, play a sport, join a club, be part of the band or student government, please don't waste the opportunities you have, because you may never be able to have those again. We have small community schools, and one of the biggest benefits of those is more opportunities for more students. Second thing we'll talk about real quick is a philosophy I picked up in the Navy that I have, I have this blindness where I assume everybody's the same, you know, as we were on a nuclear sub, every man or, or woman, they got women on them now, has to be able to rely on every other crew member to do their job. For them, it is a matter of life and death, that's just a fact, one person fails to do their job, ninety to a hundred people can die. As a school board, we do not always agree, as a matter of fact, there are often contentious disagreements about which way we may need to go as a system. Recent discussions over the capacity issues in Indy and Locust are a prime example, and while we do not all agree on the best course of action. I've been arguing for the reopening of Ridgecrest, but the majority of my colleagues disagreed. There is no right or wrong answer for a lot of these questions, okay? But the consensus was to expand Indy, and I think that's, that's what, you know, we're doing the right thing. We reached an agreement that as a body, that is the track we're taking. What does this have to do with do your job as a rule? It's simple, our Board of Ed-, of Education, finance folks, and our Finance Committee submitted to the County Commissioners a budget on time. We did our job. That's a hats out to you, Mr. Dudney and Mr. Lisk. Okay, our County Commissioners, in kind, did their statutory duty and created and presented their budget on time. The Board of Education and the County Commissioners did our jobs. Now, however, like every, now however, like every year since 2015, our county schools and our, and our county are in a fiscal limbo, despite the state constitution mandating a balanced budget by the state be done by July 1st, our Assembly is basically on vacation while the clock is ticking. Our North Carolina General Assembly has once again failing to do their job and pass a statewide budget. This malfeasance, and that's what it is, this dereliction of duty, puts our schools in a bind and ties the hands with our County Commissioners. It's also, it actually also reduces critical funding, as some federal dollars are tied to the state budget. So, my message is quite simple. Thank you, Mr. Dudney and Finance Committee for doing your job, thank you, the County Board of Commissioners for doing your job, and shame on you, North Carolina Assembly, for once again abdicating your sworn duty, do your job and pass a budget or get out of the way so someone can.
And I might need to say amen. Thank, thank you, Mr. Sorenson, for your passion, definitely, and I know when we were talking about robotics a while ago, you know, I kept looking at you, because we remember when you were, we remember when you were there at South Stanley High School, and I came that day, and they wanted me to do that robotic thing, and I was trying to do it, but I was turning around in circles instead of the robot, you remember that, don't you? Anyway, thank you, Mr. Sorenson. Ms. Watson?
All right, after that, I don't know. I want to congratulate everybody that had, got awards tonight and everything that went on with that, and thank you, Ms. Brown, for that invitation, I'm sure a lot of us will be there. This is a new school year, and I hope and pray that everybody has a wonderful, wonderful school year. I always think on the positive side, because that gets you somewhere. So, anyway, have a good, good year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Watson. Dr. Lefler, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
If you have comments to make, board member comments? If you're talking, I'm not hearing you. Dr. Lefler, I'm going to come back to you, we might need Ms. Miller over here to help, but I'll come back to you, Dr. Lefler. Ms. Whitaker?
I want to say that I always enjoy hearing what Mr. Sorenson has to say, you know, they use the word passion, you know, and he's passionate, and, and I think a lot of that comes from, because he was a teacher, and he was in the schools, he was in the classroom, and I think anytime you're on that front line, your passion is a little greater than, than maybe some others, so I, I thank you for what you had to say, Mr. Sorenson. We are excited for our new school year, it's here, I said today, because I do work in a school, and I said when I left today, ready or not, here they come, because they're coming whether we're ready or not, and with a short summer, it was, it was a lot of hard work crammed into a short amount of time, so, but I'm excited for the new school year for our teachers and our students. I want to say that I do hope Dr. Dennis is able to work some magic, and we are able to send those bonuses out to our staff, and that it's not just for one or two, but it's for all. I, I think they are very deserving of that, so we've got our fingers crossed, and I do hope that that does come through. I wanted to thank Ms. Flo and also this board, because I think we all pushed really, really hard to get those SROs in those schools. It'll be nice to see that actually happen at the beginning of the school year. And also to Ms. Brown, although I, I know she's already gone, but I think anytime we can go out and support our community and we need prayer, that's for sure, so I appreciate her coming and taking the time to invite this board to Mel Zion's get-together, and I do hope some of us are able to attend that.
Thank you, and we get to do the swim party, too? Can I come back to Dr. Lefler? Is he, okay, he's not there. Mr. Lisk?
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. I'll start by, let me just kind of clarify some of my comments from the Finance Committee, because once we're in board comments, I can kind of give you my opinion on things versus a, a finance chair, but, you know, in, in for the public, understanding what a teacher assistant does with, with ESS and the partnership with Stanley County Schools generally has been overall positive, but a ESS teacher assistant would work 180 days, a Stanley County Schools teacher assistant would work 215 days, so that's 35 days that our teachers don't have the luxury or the assistance, I guess I should say, from another human in there to help them out. ESS charges the school system a 33% markup, and I mentioned before that we had roughly $752,000 in sub-cost, and we paid ESS approximately $300,000 on top of that. In my opinion, and this is where I can opine a little bit, I, I believe that the school system can find efficiencies there, and working with our commissioners, that's something they've asked us to do, I would even further expand that and say I would want it to be efficient, but also want it to be effective. So, I do think that this board needs to take a hard look at ways we can do what other counties are doing, I think we formerly have used the ASOP system, maybe we need to hire someone in that role that can, can help us there, and I think Dr. Carter's already doing a great job, so it is a discussion that this board needs to have. Additionally, when I look at some of the data and the trends since implementation back in 2019, what I think I see, and I could be wrong, so don't quote me, but we've had a decline in our Stanley County Schools teacher assistants and an increase in ESS teacher assistants, and what I've noticed, and just as we were presented in our work session, we were partially presented by a teacher assistant hired from our school system, so I begin as a board member to have an issue with that. Next, we gave bonuses, I believe, out of either local or ESER funding to all of our employees. Dr. Dennis graciously offered to provide ESS employees, those teacher assistants, the same bonus. Sounds great until ESS wanted to charge us an 8% commission to give their employees our money. So, when I think about how this impacts our school system, I come from the corporate side, and culture means a lot to me. Culture and having a positive working environment where everyone feels vested in this community as I do, wants to work together, although you're paid less, smaller school system, lots of challenges, I, as a board member, think this, this board needs to take a real hard look at that. This is, this is not an indictment on ESS, it's not an indictment on the representatives there, I think they're fabulous people, but this is a decision as a fiduciary in my role for the taxpayer. So, I just wanted to clarify that, because that may have sounded a little bit confusing to some of the public and what that role is, and, and we're now out of contract, we are out of contract as of June 30th, so this is a time that we need to look at that. Now, also, as a board member, my opinion on it is, we're about to start school, so I don't want to do anything that would detriment our employees in the system and our teachers as we, I don't give them any sort of anxiety, so we're going to do everything we can to support them, but longer term, I think there needs to be structural change in how the dollars are used, and I do think we have a strong capability of doing it more efficiently and effectively. Again, in what democratic economy can you pay people less and all of a sudden more people want to do the job? It just doesn't make sense to me. So, there is better benefits here, the, the Department of Public Instruction has given us one more year, think to start a fiscal year 2024, that we have to adopt the pay scale, which is the Office of State Personnel. So, what that means is every other state employee gets on this pay scale, and they're paid on their grades and steps, and the Department of Public Instruction has had a different pay scale for classified or non-certified employees, and some of those are teacher assistants. So, what that means is, our average pay right now in that role is a little over $15 an hour, that should go up, whereas an ESS employee is $16.72 an hour. But my calculations show the healthcare insurance is about $4.30, is worth about $4.30 per hour, in addition to about 24.5% contributed, of their pay contributed to a pension, so when I do the math, my rough estimates are coming up north of $25 an hour for a Stanley County Schools teacher assistant, and $16.72 per hour for an ESS teacher assistant, whereas then they have to go buy health insurance on their own, and they don't have the pension benefit. So, I hope that we can do a better job of expressing these numbers and this information to our employees, so that maybe they can make a better decision for themselves, and I also think that if we have 62 TAs out there, that by God, surely, we can find two to four bus drivers, that folks that are willing to do the TA role and drive a bus to help us out. That's the end of my opining there. I'm going to give some credit here, as Mr. Sorenson did, and I really thought I was going to have to follow him up, so I'm very glad I did not have to, but to our County Commissioners, and specifically the Commissioner Committee that met with our Finance and Facilities Committee earlier this month, and also to, to Mr. Lucas, I personally think it's, of the two years almost that I've been on this board and have actively, along with other members of this board, and trying to better our communication, was one of the best meetings that we had. As Mr. Sorenson said, none of us are, you know, we're, we're up here to express our constituents' opinions, what we think is the right thing to do, and ultimately try to make a decision that's in the best interest of the taxpayers and for the general public. Sometimes those are very hard disagreements, and sometimes they're just very hard agreements. But Commissioner Patty Crump, Commissioner Mike Barbie, and Commissioner Shudo were the three folks that, that met with us, Mrs. Poplin and Mrs. Whitaker. But Mr. Lucas was also present, and I think we had a real great discussion on facilities, some of the longer-range plans, how we might can utilize our funds more efficiently, and I really think that we are taking some strides forward after this meeting, the first being Indy and of course, East Albemarle. I'm going to end on the Stanley County Hall of Fame. I had the privilege of attending that personally, and then, of course, representing our Board of Education, but the inductees were Coach Al Andrew, who coached me, Coach Brett Grettspate, who coached my wife, TA McClendon, if you remember him, Quan Sturdiva, and Shannon Smith. These are Stanley County people, athletes, that have gone on to do great things, and if you're not aware of the athletic ability that this county has, you're missing out on some really good folks. Thank you.
I agree. Ms. Poplin?
Well, now I get to follow Mr. Lisk, so I'm not sure which is worse, Mr. Sorenson or Mr. Lisk. I'll just start with, I'm excited and ready for this school year, and I'm excited for our teachers. This past Friday, I was able to help along with Badges and Boxes, which is a program through Albemarle Police Department, and our nonprofit has now partnered with them, they need my project, and we've moved our care closet in with them, where the, the police department has access to clothing at all hours of the day, but they were able to, by my rough estimate of checking folks in on Friday, provide about 160 to 165 of our teachers with cleaning supplies and Germs and all kinds of items, even some of our maintenance folks, and some of our lower grades grabbed some blankets while they were in there, I think the maintenance folks were going to use those for moving, and the others maybe for some other items, but it was good to see our staff back and excited to start the year, and it was nice to be able to provide those things to our staff at no cost. I'll follow up with Mr. Lisk, I also had here in my notes to thank that Commissioner Group, it's been a work in progress, getting everybody kind of on the same page and in the same realm of thought in there, getting all the ideas together, but we did get our demographic study back, and facilities are going to become a topic that we're going to need to have regular discussions about, it sounds like, because we're going to have to figure out where our future students are going to be housed, and what buildings we're going to be able to use to house those students, especially in the western end of the county and here in Albemarle. Those are the areas that we are seeing developments going up and new homes being built, so that is something we're definitely going to have to keep those meetings going, and hopefully they'll go as well as the last one, and work on those more long-range plans. And as Mr. Sorenson mentioned, we are bringing up, you know, some other previous options, and discussions are happening around that, but as for the immediate need, we are looking at Indy and East Albemarle. I just want to kind of give a little shameless plug for Lunch Buddies, I know that's something that's kind of been near and dear to my heart for a while now, but we are getting ready to start school back up again, and that is, you know, just 15 to 20 minutes of your day once a week, if you can help out with that. I'm, I'm excited to get back and see my little kiddos and my friends from last year, and hopefully some of the same ones will be paired up with me at the schools that I go to, but the kids look forward to that, and for some of them, that is one of the only stable relationships they have with an adult on a weekly basis, so if you have 10 or 15, 20 minutes that you can spare, and don't mind getting a background check to go eat lunch with a kid, please do that. And a huge thank you to Ms. Brown for inviting us, anytime we can get out and pray for our students and support our kids, I'm all about that, so. So I hope to be able to attend that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Poplin. It's been hard to connect with Dr. Lefler. We've tried up here, so I know he would have some words of support, definitely for a teacher starting back, but it's just been hard to keep that connection going. Thank you for, Ms. Flo, our, again, our commissioners, everyone that's put that work into getting our SROs in all of our schools. I've actually had a couple parents to say to me already that just their presence alone helps them feel so, so much better. And just, just the fact of that patrol car there and all this, it's already, you can, our parents, our, our communities are speaking up and thanking them. And so, again, I thank the commissioners for their support, Ms. Flo for all you've done, and of course, up here, board members as well. Congratulations to those that received awards. Thank you, Ms. Rolls, for sharing lots of things with us tonight. It's, it's very interesting. And again, we want our teachers to know how much this board supports them in every way. And I wish all of them a wonderful year. It's exciting, even for us, that the school year is starting. I can't wait till, like, my little grandchildren come home, because they're going to be talking about their teacher and the magic in the classroom. And, you know, those teachers are just able, able to do that. Thank you to the county office that's always here, always. Ms. Hatley, you're back there, but we, we certainly see you and appreciate you. I know that, I believe Ms. Poplin and Ms. Watson and myself, I believe we're going next week for a day to Asheville. It's sponsored again by the UNC School of Government with some training, and I always, always enjoy that. I think that, again, that is, that is it for comments. Thank you, board members. The date and time of our next board meeting will be Tuesday, September 5th, 2023, at 6:15 in the Jim McIntyre Meeting Room. I am going to, it will not be then, because we have to reschedule that? So we're going to be someplace else? Okay, so it will be Tuesday, September 5th, 6:15, but it will be at a location to be determined. There you go. I'm going to, at this time, call the board back into closed session. We just recessed for a while. And board members, if you can take just a few minutes as far as a break, about five minutes, and then meet back in there for closed session. We have some more things definitely to discuss. Next on the agenda is Personnel Administration and Student Services. Dr. Carter.
Madam Chair, board members, if I may call your attention to the personnel agenda. There are three sections to it tonight. The first one, of course, is no action for your review. Section two, with the amendments made in closed session, I respectfully request your approval, items A through F.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve section two of the personnel agenda as presented?
Motion to approve.
A motion by Ms. Whitaker, a second. Second by Ms. Poplin. All in favor say aye. Oppose no. Section two has been approved.
And I also respectfully request your approval for section three, which is a recommendation for the superintendent contract for addendum number three.
Okay, may I have a motion?
I move to approve section three regarding the extension and amendments to the superintendent's contract as discussed in closed session.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Lisk, a second. All in favor say aye. Oppose no. Okay, this has been approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, board members, Dr. Dennis, all of you. I need a motion to adjourn. Motion by Ms. Poplin, a second. All in favor say aye. Oppose no. We are adjourned. Thank you.